Started, I don't think our invocation individual is here this morning, so we're going to stand to have a moment of silence followed by Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Old?
Here.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here. We have two absences, and in the absences of the mayor, I guess I'm running the meeting. Condolences are welcome. First thing is, we've got to get our agenda set up. We have a possible...
Yes, sir. Item 4B1, we're requesting be added to the agenda. It is a resolution urging other member cities and the Board of Directors of the Florida Municipal Power Agency to support and adopt certain actions in response to the recent Florida Auditor General Operational Audit of the agency.
Okay. And then we do have two members missing. Do you guys feel comfortable going forward with that, or would you rather wait until the other members are here?
I feel comfortable going forward with it. Wayne, are you?
It'll need to be unanimous of the three members here to add it to the agenda.
Okay, so in setting a policy, we still have to count to three instead of two?
Just three.
All right. Well, I didn't know. We were making it easier on the city manager.
Yeah, and it's not really setting a policy. It's in, if you've seen it, it's in response to the FMPA audit. And it is urging other cities to support what the City of Vero Beach is proposing.
If we're comfortable with that, we can make a motion for, to approve the agenda as amended, or if there's other things you'd like to add?
No, motion to approve as amended.
Just like to add that.
Would you like to second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Proclamations, I don't see any proclamations that we have in front of us. Public comment, talk about baseball first. My apologies, they're on the agenda. So, Mr. Young?
Oh, you're going to talk about it. Do we have a choice of public comments?
Well, they filled out the paperwork on the agenda, so they've got priority to come. Also, I got the police chief here, I'm going to have him address with your issue as well, so if...
Yes, hi, my name is George Young, 658 Browning Terrace. Brought the attention to you all about the having a lease at Bob Summers Field for baseball, for youth baseball. We have, I don't know if you have it in front of you or not, we have six different, five to six different trial ball, baseball teams that would like to utilize Bob Summers Baseball Field, you know, keep the maintenance, also pay for any utilities, water, sewer, what have you over there, and upkeep the field. We've got the blessing of some different groups. As far as the dog park over there, they're very ecstatic that we're over there, and we're, you know, practicing over there a little bit as far as right now, but we'd like to, you know, be able to take over that facility, and again, for the better of Indian River County baseball, we'd like to be able to use that facility with your help.
Our recommendation is to approve and allow us to go forward to bring a lease back to the council for consideration at the next meeting. It'd be similar to what we've done on the other ball fields. They have been a very compatible use down there, they're maintaining the field, they're using it right now, paying the light charge of $35 an hour, and so this would put them under a lease, and as indicated by George, they have been very compatible, I think. Jim is here somewhere, but they've been very compatible with the dog park operation.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And what field would that leave for people to use if they just wanted to go use a field?
Actually, under our lease, it is still open to the public. He gets to schedule times, but it's still open to the public.
Absolutely.
For free?
We will, if they want to use the lights, they've got to pay for the lights, but daytime usage, we're going to be able to have certain groups come in and be able to use it for free. That's correct.
Now, is it true that the field wouldn't be locked up so neighborhood kids could come over and play a game, or whatever, if the field's not being used?
Will the field be locked up?
Right.
Well, we'll have to lock the batting cages in the field only due to the fact that for liability issue, I can't have a kid go out there and get hurt, and then turn around and put it on us because we're not there to supervise, or we're not there to maintain what's going on.
Right. I just had read somewhere that it was going to still be open to the public to just walk in and use the field.
Well, it will be, it will be open to the public, it's just long as they schedule through us, and, you know, if they're using lights or what have you, then at that point, you know, we're going to have some type of charge. You know, we've got to make sure that we have the liability issue. We don't want someone to go out there and get hurt, and have the field wide open, nobody there.
But the city still holds the liability on the field, don't we?
No, sir. He takes out insurance and also makes us insured.
Yeah, they would have to indemnify the city for any operations over there. And Rob is in the audience. Rob, is that the same way it works up at Michael Field? They just have complete control, the public can't just walk in and play a pickup game or something?
See, that's my concern, that we won't have a field.
But we will, we will work with the public. If someone calls us and says, hey, I'd like to go for a practice, and we have nothing going on there, we will work with them. I'm not here to, you know, keep everybody away, but only our group. We're here to work with, I want Indian River County baseball to get better, and by doing so, it takes everyone to chip in and work together to do so. So I'm not going to push kids away, I'm not going to push parents away. We're there to help out, and we're there to work with others.
Would you have some kind of little sign or something to say you can call this number to use the field?
Exactly.
You guys have done a great job on the other fields, I just don't want to completely limit the ability of people to walk onto a field and play catch with their kids.
Well, that will not happen. We will work that out. Again, I'm not going to, liability issue, you know, if a team shows up there and wants to play a game, you know, somebody may get hurt. At that point, you know, we need to know what's going on if we've got control of the field as far as the liability issue. That's all.
And in today's world, there's very little pickup baseball or football anymore, and if they do, they also have access to Riverside Park, which we have open space for that.
We can go forward on the lease and work as we make sure that those things are in place as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Okay.
If the council agrees, we'll just bring back the lease. It'd be similar to what was used at Michael Field.
Are you suggesting that in the lease, we have some type of a public use clause?
Mm-hmm.
Randy, are you okay with going forward there?
I am.
Okay, you've got consensus. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, you're up.
Good morning, council members, and also Chief Curry, thank you for coming too. I'm going to ask one of the other speakers, my name's David Hunter on Eagle Drive in Vero Beach, 3702 Eagle Drive. I'm going to ask one of the other speakers to make some brief comments because he has to leave. It's Jim Bass, who's the former CEO of Piper and lives in Central Beach. We're lucky to have such a distinguished person living in our community and showing our community values, so I think it's important that he have a chance to address you directly. And then I'll come back, and I'd like to indulge your kind selves for a few minutes to talk about this problem in more depth. Please, Jim.
Good morning, council members. My name is Jim Bass, and as Dave mentioned, I'm the former CEO of Piper Aircraft and currently serving on three public company boards. I don't know if I can live up to the accolades that Dave was kind enough to bestow upon me, but I do appreciate your time this morning to let me say a few comments about short-term rentals. I choose to live in Vero Beach because of the community, the quality of life, and proximity to family. However, in Central Beach, these attributes are being threatened by short-term rentals. In Central Beach alone, more than 28 residential properties are being actively advertised, mostly short-term rentals, through vacationrentalbyowner.com. Short-term rentals destroy a sense of neighborhood, decrease property values, and they increase crime. They create unwanted and undesirable commercial activity in a residential neighborhood. While this council meets, debates, contemplates, and considers what actions to take, its citizens suffer at the hands of unscrupulous landlords who flagrantly disregard the code's intent, aided by ineffective code enforcement. When code enforcement reluctantly acts, it's often only after damage has occurred, such as the recent crimes on Dahlia Lane demonstrate. And when violators are cited, the penalties are so meaningless, it often encourages further violations. If this council is committed to represent and protect the best interests of its citizens, they must restructure code enforcement to report to the police department, prioritize aggressive enforcement, increase penalties so they are financially punitive, and motivate would-be violators to respect the code. And lastly, use internet advertisements as evidence of intent to violate code, as many other communities throughout the country have already done. I fear if this council fails to take meaningful action, the window of opportunity will close, and this community will unalterably fall to commercial interests and developers, like so many other communities to our south. Time is running out. On my block alone, there are over four different vacation rentals, short-term rentals, and I live on Date Palm, and it has gone from a very community-oriented, neighborly-type block to a place where we see frequent turnover, strangers, a lot of increased traffic, garbage after parties on the weekends, and quite honestly, the quality of the neighborhood is eroding. Soon, well-funded special interest groups with lots of money may dominate this council's agenda, and the average citizen won't stand a chance. Fortunately, I have the means to move. Unfortunately, many others don't. Faced with this reality, the question before this council is, what will you do? There are many people watching. I really thank you for your time, and I hope you'll consider these points, because this is something that affects the quality of life for everyone in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time today.
Jim, greatly appreciate your comments. Before we go, what was the name of that website?
Vacation, let's see, vrbo.com.
VRBO...
And what's interesting about this website is that there are comments by people who rented the properties, which say, you know, "Thank you, I had a wonderful weekend in Vero Beach, lots of restaurants and bars, appreciate your service." So it's not just intent, there's actual proof that people are using the website to intentionally violate our code.
Yeah, it's listed by the night, like on here, it's listed per night, per night the prices.
So, and again, I believe code enforcement says that this doesn't represent prima facie evidence that the code has been violated, because that represents something that has to occur after the fact. However, the website lists comments by people who have already rented there on a daily basis.
If I may, Vice Mayor, there were some recent changes you did adopt in the, both the zoning ordinances and in the code enforcement, and maybe everyone present isn't necessarily aware of those. What we did, the council adopted some clarification when it comes to vacation rentals, and also we modified the code enforcement ordinance, removing any doubt that the code enforcement board doesn't interpret, they just apply the code to the facts presented to them. And what you did in the zoning ordinance, basically, we did create a rebuttable presumption that if it's advertised as a short-term rental, it is a short-term rental. And code enforcement, I believe, Mr. McGary's here, but code enforcement, I believe, is going forward with enforcement actions based on properties they find that are advertised, just as you've said. And it's put a little more enforcement teeth into the ordinance, and plus, we wanted to clarify in case any enforcement action gets challenged again, if we end up in court, we want to be on better footing. And plus, we have actually, this, the staff here has really been working quite heavily with the legislative delegation to adopt some changes to the state statute that has kind of created some of these problems.
Yeah, I know this is a difficult problem that you're struggling with from a litigious standpoint, and making sure that there's clarity in the way the code is written, and the way it can be enforced and upheld. But right now, people are flagrantly violating the code, out in the open, without any fear of anything happening to them. In fact, a very large developer just last week completed a house on the corner of Mockingbird and Cypress, and it's up on vrbo.com, advertising for weekly rentals. And this is a large developer. And the violators are out in the open and conducting business on a daily basis without any fear.
Let's get through the public comment on this issue, and then I want to...
Thank you.
I would like to hear from Mr. McGary and the chief on this, and let the public know what we're doing on this.
It's David Hunter again. Already introduced myself. I want to second Jim Bass's remarks about this. We do appreciate what the city council is intending to do. Many of you ran for office with the specific campaign slogan that you were going to try to stop short-term rentals. So I understand your good intent, and I'm encouraged by what Mr. Comment has said about the reenact, what I call clarification of the existing code, which is our only umbrella to protect us, because essentially, the state has abandoned the protection of its citizens against this plague of short-term rentals. As far as the fact that people in the city that are doing short-term rentals seem to be ignoring our code, I think that's beyond doubt. One of the properties that was actually cited with a limited fine of $50, which was called Eagle Drive Delight, it was one of my main battles to get them identified as a short-term rental, and the code enforcement sat in their cars for weeks checking coming and going of traffic before they finally decided that, yes, indeed, it was a short-term rental going on, even though it was on a website listed as a short-term rental, and comments about the short-term rental stays were mentioned in the website. Well, they stopped after the $50 fine. Unfortunately, while I was checking the website before coming to this meeting, they're back. This is the property, Eagle Drive Delight, listed on the website, the same location, same property, offering four bedrooms, two baths, sleeping 10 people, available by the Obviously, the enforcement actions thus far have not proved a deterrent, and the people that are behaving in such manner are total scofflaws. They do not care about your law because your law is not being enforced, and it does not have enough teeth to it to deter violations. That's one example. We mentioned Vero Vacation Rent By Owner. Rent By Owner has 28 vacation rentals listed as of this weekend. In Central Beach, of Vero Beach, I went on the website and looked. You can check each of these properties. Most of these properties I know. I know the properties. One is on Silver Palm, one is on Fiddlewood, one is on Date Palm, one is on Holly. They're all, they even give map coordinates and photographs of the properties. Now, if code enforcement cannot find a property that has a map coordinate and a photograph, and sometimes even the address, I wonder what they're doing. I submit these to Tammy.
This is for the public record, this is the property, this is one of the persons that's handling the rental of that property. These are the vacation rent by owner. And then I'd like to pass out, this is actually the state of Florida's public lodging establishment.
Looks like you got notes behind the backside of those.
Yeah.
Here, give me another one.
I got it.
And this is, this is an alternate proposal, I'll mention if you get into this.
Is there a further comment on the short-term rental issue?
Yeah, let me just finish. I'd like to explain what I just passed out. Because the reason for this discussion today, and the reason why it's reached this fevered pitch, if you want to refer to it that way, is because of the events of Dahlia last week, where a short-term rental turned into a major crime wave. I have been warning about the problems of short-term rentals constituting a threat to our community. In July 18th of 2013, I addressed the Planning and Zoning Board, and you can find the public comments minutes about that, but it clearly stated that this represents a coming tsunami, a threat to our community. And that's why I have been working on this issue for a number of years with you on the city council, to try to prevent this and control this. And unfortunately, as you can see from the Vero Vacation, I mean Vacation Rent By Owners, many of these property listed are from people who have just started doing this in 2014. So the problem is not getting less, it's getting worse. There are a lot of these people offering properties now that just bought properties in the last year and have decided, I'm going to turn these into commercial rental properties with vacation renters as hotels, or mini-hotels. And that's what they're doing, and it's, they're doing it this year, 2014, is when many of them opened their website and started listing these properties. The situation on Dahlia, Chief Curry and his officers did a very effective job of following up, but I want you to understand what the situation was, just for the record. I have a copy of a letter that was sent to Mayor Winger and to you in the city council. Hopefully, you've received a copy of it. This is from eight members, residents of Dahlia, and they described the terror that they went through in two nights. The first night of January 18th at 4:30 a.m., most neighbors were awakened by loud car honking, bumping, and screaming until 5:30. The police were called. At daylight, we counted, I quote, "seven or eight men and one woman and two mid-sized cars." On January 19th, the following day, following night, at 2 o'clock, 2:30 a.m., neighbors of Dahlia were awakened by running, banging of doors, closing of cars, until 4 a.m. It turns out that they left and stole some of the owner's property. Well, we also found out that they, from the police report, that they stole property from cars and around the other neighborhood, in the neighboring streets. Unfortunately, the police report says that Mr. Matt Martinez, who's the renter, the owner of that property, the landlord, shall you say, of that property, of Dahlia, he was identified as the chief victim, because he lost two flat-screen TVs in his property. I maintain he is not a victim. He is a co-conspirator in the crime. He was breaking the law by renting that property, and then some of the criminals that he rented it to ended up compounding that problem and vandalizing the neighborhood. So the real victims are Ms. Bassini, Mr. of Bougainvillea, Mr. Corrigan of Hibiscus, Mr. Lipkin of Flamevine, Mr. Barnett of Dahlia, and also, they were all robbed, and also the Catskins, pardon if I mispronounce your names, the Donleys, the Belinkoffs, the Crosby's, the Johnsons on Dahlia, who were awakened and threatened at night, two nights running. They were victims. All of us who obey the laws of Vero Beach are victims of this type of crime. But the crime, the principal crime, was the renting out of that property against our code. We would not have had this crime wave of teenagers from Miami had Mr. Martiz not rented out in violation of our code. So the concept of controlling that, we need, I'm going to ask you as city council members and the city officers, if they would work with us to try to form a task force and identify ways to effectively restrict and control this activity. I'm encouraged by Mr. Comment's comments that they, there's a possibility of considering advertising on the web as a prima facie evidence. I know that the city of Sedona and the government, the county of Maui, use advertising as evidence of proof to determine if a property is rented, and in some cases, they actually offer, in Sedona, they use a violation Class 1 misdemeanor with a fine of $2,500, or six months in jail for illegal advertising of short-term rentals. So I think we could look at beefing up our penalties substantially to help deter this crime. Keep in mind, these people are making, you know, $2,000 a week renting out, so if they have to pay a $50 fine or $100 fine, that's not a deterrent. So anyway, I will end with that and say that we hope to see more action, and quickly, to try to address this problem, because this bomb, or a crime bomb that took place on Dahlia should be a wake-up call to all of us, that we need to act on this issue. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hunter, to respond to your request to set up a committee, I have absolutely no problem with that. We'd be very happy to work with you. If you can get us a list of names and addresses of people you want to participate in that, we'll work it through Tim's office, and we'll have the code enforcement officers there actually with you, and then we can go through the processes.
Yes, we need, we need people higher up than the code enforcement officer. We need you and some city council members...
And I'm sure the city attorney has no problem.
...and the city attorney, because the issue, it may be that we need to restructure the entire code enforcement itself. That's probably, as someone, Mr. Bass, mentioned earlier, maybe we need to move code enforcement into the police department, as it's done in Palm Beach, so that the, because, keep in mind, code enforcement is, their office hours are nine to five. A lot of this goes on on the weekend. There's nobody around on the weekend, but the police are at least a 24/7 operation. So we may need to consider that. So anyway, but yes, I appreciate your offer, and we definitely want to see what we can come up with on that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate what you're doing. Mr. Muircher?
Mark Muircher, 617 Indian Lyle Lock Road in Central Beach. I don't personally have a dog in this fight, and I understand the limitations and the problems of code enforcement, but if I could make a quick, simple suggestion, if the advertising seems to be centralized in this, in one or maybe several, few websites, then perhaps a message from the chief of police telling these website operators that this is illegal activity, and requesting that they no longer advertise for properties within the city of Vero Beach, maybe that would cut the problem off at the source, or at least, at least a big chunk of it. On a separate but related issue, a long time ago, when I was on the Planning and Zoning Board, an attorney for a boarding house operator in Central Beach, actually, I believe it was on Date Palm, argued for the rights of the property owner to conduct a boarding house, and I asked him, what part of single-family residential don't you understand? And I think that applies here, if you've got... And I think that applies here, if you've got short-term rentals with no, in quotes, "single-family" requirement, for whatever period of time, I think that applies. So, thanks.
Thank you. Sure.
Jim Shea, 3526 Mockingbird Drive, Central Beach, across from Beachland Elementary, and the home that Mr. Bass spoke about, the brand-new home, that's, that's for rent for $1,800 to $3,500 a week. I got a few comments to make here in the beginning. Short-term rentals bring crime in the form of break-ins and destruction of personal property. They bring noise in the form of loud parties and blaring Harley-Davidson exhaust systems. They bring parties that sometimes go on for days and bring indiscriminate parking and disregard for homeowners' rights and expectations for quality of life in a single-family residential neighborhood. The city council has an obligation to enact appropriate laws and regulations to stop this type of behavior. If the laws can't be, be enacted at a local level, the council needs to hire lobbyists and attorneys to take it to the state level. If the council and the Chamber of Commerce supported short-term vacation rentals in single-family home neighborhoods, they should be called out and replaced with conscientious citizens who don't condone whoring for every dollar regardless of the collateral damage to those of us who live here and want to be protected from such intrusions to our peace, privacy, security, and well-being. I just want to add a few things. My wife and I lived in Big Pine Key for 18 years. I'm a retired Dade County firefighter. Lost my home in Hurricane Andrew, so we moved to the Keys till I finished my career. In the Keys, we lived on a street that had nine homes, five on one side, four on the other, cul-de-sac dead-end canals behind. We had a house directly across from us that, over a period of time, became, it had been owned by a bunch of people who were divers together, but I'll get to the point. One guy finally wound up with it, and he started short-term vacation rentals. Sometimes we would have to park two or three blocks from our home to get, to get home, because there would be 40 or 50 spring breakers at the house. The parties went on for days and days. The police would come out and try to support us and issue citations and everything, but because of the culture and the power of the real estate establishment and the Chamber of Commerce in Monroe County, they really didn't care about year-round citizens and homeowners. And, and the zoning was similar to what I have here, which is single-family residential. Ultimately, my neighbors and I wound up buying the guy out, fixing the house up, and selling it to somebody we knew that was going to live there as a, you know, as a single-family homeowner. And I see signs here, I think it all started with the failure of, of the city to enforce the Tracy Carroll rental that we had a while back. That kind of was a signal to the realtors and the other people who are trying to exploit this opportunity to, to set up shop here and, and ruin our neighborhood. I'm opposed to it. We need to take it seriously. I mean, we used to have to lock our bicycles up every year in the Keys for March and April, because the, the spring breakers would come in and steal everybody's bicycle, ride them for a couple weeks, and then leave them in the bushes somewhere. And, and that's not what I moved to Vero Beach for. My family's lived here since the 50s, and, you know, when I moved up from the Keys, I was expecting to be living in a nice, single-family residential area. The new house that Mr. Bass spoke about is directly across the street from me. It's owned by a guy in Sweden. It's listed on the site that you have there, $1,800 to $3,500 a week. It's also listed for rent with Al Benkert. He also has the listing of the house directly behind my bedroom window, that's usually a year-rental, but it's no longer. It's not single-family. He's got six waitresses from Johns Island in there now, and I don't consider six waitresses from Poland to be a single family. Anyway, it's, it's starting to look like a sinking ship. And, and we need to nip it in the bud. And I have a list here, I've started, for anybody who wants to sign on to be involved in this, and I'll take names and phone numbers or, or email addresses at the end of the meeting. Thanks very much for your time.
Thanks.
Just, just also for clarification, now, we did take the Carroll case to court. We happened to lose in court on that, but we, and so that's what's given us the motivation now to modify our codes, and we will go back again.
Yeah, law enforcement has a longtime slogan, "You can beat the rap, but you can't beat the ride." And I think if we make enough of these people ride, maybe they'll discourage it.
Again, that was about a $50,000 ride.
Yeah, well, we wasted a lot of money on a lot stupider things than that.
Next.
Good morning, council members and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Randy Frye. I reside at 902 Seagrape Lane. I'm not going to beat the dead horse here, I know you've heard a lot, but we used to have a, a short-term rental. It was one of the Carols rentals next door, and, you know, parking, cars all over, wedding receptions, trash, just a disregard for the laws. The house went into foreclosure, went into a short sale. We now have a nice family with two children. It is wonderful. I mean, they've landscaped the property, it looks very curb-appealing now, and it's, life has gotten a whole lot better. And I can tell you, and attest to you, that we don't need these short-term rentals. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Good morning. My name's Paul Rodliff, and I own a home on Ocean Drive. You don't need to hear from another person to say why they came here, probably, but while I was working, I traveled Florida quite a bit and went to a number of places, and I was ambivalent whether I would ever own a retirement home here. And I had good friends here that lived here and said, "Paul, I know you, I know Jean, your wife, come on down, stay with us for a few days and see what you think." That four-day stay, I opened up a checkbook and bought a house, so it cost me a little bit of money. But it is a special place, and I, and I know you know that, because you do what you do, and you've probably lived here a lot longer than my four years, but it is special. And when you take that away, it's gone. So, protect it or not, but when it's gone, it's gone. Secondarily, VRBO, Vacation Rentals By Owner, is just one. Go on Airbnb. I can rent my car, I can, I can go, I can be Uber and be a taxi driver tomorrow. I appreciate Craigslist. How many murder trials are going on in the country today, based on Craigslist listings? You are up against it, and it's moving faster than government can move, and I'm not saying that as a slight, by the way. It's just a reality. So, your challenge is daunting to get ahead of technology that's out there and people that can turn their car into a taxi or their home into a hotel. And I don't understand all the language within the code, but I can tell you this, every time I check into a hotel, I show my driver's license. And that story in the paper said that guy had no idea who the people were he was renting to. But you can't go into a hotel today without giving them a photo ID. I'm renting a home in Maine in the summer for a family get-together. I had to provide a list of every single person who was going to be there, their age, their home address, and when I go, I'll be met by someone who wants to see my identification. There are things to do to make sure that people aren't stupid, that I'll rent my place to anybody without any idea who the hell they are, if the story in the paper was accurate. You know, and again, I don't, maybe those regulations are already in the code, but I suggest a lot more could be done to make damn sure that people who are renting are doing it the right way.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Paul Koval, and I live at 638 Camelia, two doors from the home in Dahlia, two houses from the home in Dahlia, but on Camelia. I come with a very simple request. I lived in three gated communities here, and finally got the sense that I don't want to live in a gated community anymore. I want to be downtown, where I can be, walk to 16 restaurants and everything. All I, and if you look at all the real estate ads, they say, "No HOA." Now, in its broadest sense, you are our HOA. If you look at it in that terms, our future is with you. And I wish you the best and hope you can do something for us. Thank you.
Herb Whittle, 19th Park Avenue. I want to talk to you about something else, but the house right next door to me has been empty for three years. It's in court between two sisters. And what I'm afraid of on this short-term rental is if the one sister gets it, she may turn it into that. So I urge you to do something to increase the fines, increase the things. Now, Mr. Kramer, can I talk about something else as well?
Well, I'd like to get to the short-term rental, but it's, I think if you're...
Is there anybody else with a short-term rental?
Is there, is there anybody else that wants to speak about the short-term rental?
Did you want the chief?
Well, we do. I'm going to, I'll do it right after him.
I just want, you all got an email from me, and it has to do with code enforcement as well. And we have this house across the way, which code enforcement is well-informed of, but they can't seem to do anything. You've seen pictures of it? And now he's gotten a permit to build a, a two-foot wall around his pool. That was done about two weeks ago, on Friday of that week, two, they unloaded about 9:00 at night, two pallets of, of cinder blocks. Next day, somebody came, they weren't enough. He built part of the wall. So, another pallet arrived last Friday, they unloaded it yesterday, but they haven't built the wall. What bothers me is that the wall looks very nice towards the pool. The back of the wall, which all of the neighbors look at, it looks like a cinder block with just, you know, cement. It looks awful, and it's adding to the disaster of this house. I don't know what the permit says, but permits should be made to make sure you got a proper person doing it, and it looks right, to everybody. And the other thing that I want to talk about is that, apparently, the city of Vero Beach, if you build a commercial property, you have to put landscaping in before you get a certificate of occupancy. In Indian River Shores, if you build a single-family house, you have to put in landscaping before you get a certificate of occupancy. Vero Beach, you do not. And I think that we need, right away, an ordinance that says, if you build a new single-family house, you don't get a certificate of occupancy until you put in your landscaping. Because this house has been there for four and a half years, he's been in it for nine months, and there's no landscaping. So, thank you.
Wayne, just real quick, could you, could you find us some of the ordinances, sample ordinances, from people that do the landscaping before the certificate of occupancy?
We can.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for the council, just to see it.
Yeah, I know, and of course, this, a lot of this comes under the building code, which we don't have much control over. It's the Florida Building Code, which is...
Well, if we pass the ordinance, then I guess the county's going to have to...
Well, if Indian River Shores requires it, and you require it on a commercial building, I don't see why you can't require it on a single-family house.
Right, but it, it comes into, it's in the zoning code, so, I mean, we'd have to look at those type of things.
Well, yeah, well, I wish you would, because there's two new houses going to be built over on Tarpon. There are two that have been destroyed, I mean, taken out completely. Who knows what they'll do? And the one next to me, if somebody buys it, they'll probably tear it down, unless they want to make it into a short-term rental as it is. And again, there's nothing that makes them put in landscaping before they get a certificate of occupancy, and that doesn't make sense.
In order to get the ball rolling, we just need to start collecting documentation on it, let's see it.
Yeah, that's fine, but I just would like you to push them to do it.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the, the one thing that the building department will enforce, that you have to have a ground cover at least, in other words, grass, or it's been seeded or something, but they don't, you know, they're not going to require landscaping.
Well, on top of that wonderful little propane tank they put in the front, there's weeds. Now, you call that land, you know, ground cover?
Yeah, that's, Mr. McGary and I were speaking about that, and he may very well add that to the list of violations. It's just supposed to have, we're growing weeds on the property either.
If, if there's no more comment about the short-term rental issue, if I could ask Mr. McGary to kind of come up and, and give us a briefing as to where we're at with this
Thank you. I just want to state that one reason the city hasn't been active on vacation rentals is we were holding off enforcement until the new regulations were in place, which were recently done last month. So, a lot of these issues have transpired, and I agree, 2014, because a lot of people probably thought the court case settled it, and we can go ahead and do whatever we want, you know, and that's not the case. We are actively going through the internet and advertising, and the change in the law, or change in our code that we did in the recent tweaking, allows us on the advertising to go after them as a violation, just for advertising. And that makes it much easier for us. It's rebuttable, they'd have to show they're not doing it, but that and other evidence, clearly, when you're on websites, you can see that they've already, they have calendars to show where they booked places. I mean, it's pretty clear that they've done that. So, we've already cited at least eight, we've, the Dahlia Road one, that where we had the, the crime scene, that one, that person's already been cited for the $50. And I kind of agree, and I'll go into this a little more, I kind of agree we need to look at stronger penalties, because we have ways to do it, but it takes a while to do it. But basically, what we'll do on these, such as in that gentleman, he's been told to cease and desist 10 days after the notification, if it's still being advertised for that, we know it's going to be, because he's got, we're going to then find him again with a recurring, and bring him before the code board, and they can then start assessing continuing penalties on a per-day basis. So, we will do this on all these to move forward as rapidly as possible, get them for the...
What's the maximum fine that we could do? Because if you're making $2,000, $50 is not...
Yeah, the, in very few exceptions, the city just has a standard $50 for the first violation. If it's a repeat within five years, I think it goes to 100.
100.
100.
Then 150.
A second repeat in five years, then goes to, like, 150. It eventually gets to 250, because, but the code board, if, if someone, and remember how our process works, it's a citation process, doesn't even go to the code board unless they fail to respond or, and correct a violation, or fail to pay, or if they request a hearing. If they request a hearing, those penalties that are in the code are considered reduced penalties. They waive the right to pay that reduced penalty, and the code board can assess up to $500. And we don't like to go beyond that, because then you get into questionable territory where the Chapter 162 Florida statutes, which, which is your code enforcement statute, it basically sets maximum $500 penalty. We don't want to go beyond that, because people have challenged the authority that's been delegated by the state legislature, and there, there's courts that agree that you, you shouldn't go beyond $500. So, unless there's a, there's an exception as to pretty serious violations that can't be rectified, such as cutting down a, a champion oak tree or something like that, where we have substantial penalties, which the code enforcement statute then does allow you to go to higher one-time penalties, I think something up to like $5,000.
Do we have to start at the $50?
No.
Or start at the $500?
No, the, the council could adopt different penalties for this violation. There are separate stated violations. What, the way the code enforcement ordinance, and remember, we, we opted out of all of the procedures of 162, and the city adopted its own processes, which we're allowed to do under Chapter 162. We did that about, I don't know what, Tim, five years ago, six years ago? And it's worked well, because it speeds up the process. That was the biggest problem, why we wanted out of 162 processes. It speeds a, a case up considerably. And the council could adopt, set penalties for this type violation. The way the process works, though, if it's a repeat violation, in other words, if you're up to, say you set it at 250, and if it goes to the code board, they haven't responded, they haven't, or they haven't corrected the violation, in other words, this is continuing, they're continuing to rent it out, they're continuing to advertise it, it could be considered a continuing violation. a continuing violation. So what happens is, and they don't respond, or they don't pay, they don't stop it, the code board then can issue what's called a notice of assessment of continuing penalties. They're served with that, and basically, what the code says is, they can double the amount of the penalty. So in other words, if you had a 250 penalty set, they could double it to 500 per day in that notice of assessment. And it's up to the code enforcement officer, whoever's prosecuting it, to request that, but the code board does have that authority already. So yes, you can, long answer to, should have been short, said, yes, you can adopt a stronger penalty.
And those run per day? So it would be per day until they, so 250 a day until...
Yeah, they have to prove it's continuing, and each day is then assessed that penalty as a separate violation.
Yeah, I can tell you, as the code officer, I did that with Carol, we will push for that when we get, if we get in front of the board, until changes are made in the code, if that needs to be. So we're very serious about this.
And remember, we're fighting the legislature over this. They've made it harder to enforce your zoning or, you know, codes, because of what they did. And to her credit, Representative Mayfield is trying to, again this year, make some modifications that we worked with her on.
I just, you know, if we make it more expensive to do, if you're, the penalty becomes more expensive than what you're getting in revenue, that might nip it.
Yeah, if you, if you were to go to, like I said, that, we do have increases, you know, like we talked about, repeat penalties, and that's after they've been either paid, which means they've admitted the violation. If they don't respond, it's an admission of the violation. And once that's in the record, that can be used to, then, the next time they're cited, it's a repeat. And depending on how many times they've had a repeat in five years, it could, the maximum, I think, is 250, because of the doubling thing, that we wanted to keep it under 500 per day.
Mr. Kramer, Mr. Old, what do you guys think about the penalty?
We, we could bring it back for your consideration at the 250, if that's what you wish.
250 or 300?
Something more, obviously, something a lot more than 50, there's no doubt. And the higher we can go, the better.
Remember, you're still going to have, you can also put in there the repeat violation. In other words, it could be the 250, or you could start at 150 or 2, whatever. But remember, if it's a repeat, it's going to get doubled, and we're not going to recommend going over 500 per day.
No, no. No, I agree, but...
So we're stuck, basically, with 250, if we're going to...
I would probably start there, because like I said, if it's continuing, the board, then, the code board, in a notice of assessment, can then assess $500 per day.
Okay.
We will bring that back for council consideration at 250, and then, with the understanding that we will build in the ability of the code board to double that.
Yeah, well, that's already in the code.
So is it just that they're renting, or is it they're advertising too? Is advertising gets the...
Well, I wouldn't go to advertising, because first thing we're going to do is get a call from their attorney saying, hey, you're violating my First Amendment rights, and that's what you're going to get from the websites. And we don't need to be in some big federal lawsuit to fight the First Amendment.
So how do we stop this on the websites? How do we stop this on the websites?
I don't think we can.
Well, I, I don't think we can either, and that's always been an issue. But usually, as I said, there's other evidence involved that we bring into this, as I said, that you...
Yeah, the advertising is just a start, and then the code enforcement officer investigates, and you find the out-of-state cars, or the out-of-town cars, and the, you know, six or eight cars in the...
But I understand, I've got two officers, and think of everything else they have to do in the city. And so, we're doing what we can here, and we know this is a priority for the council.
Just remember, I mean, what we do has to be within the framework of the state law and constitutional law and what have you, so that we can, there's only so much we can do.
Is that, I mean, and that seems to be the issue, that if it's being rented out for two nights over the weekend, it's harder for us to get out and see that, because that's not the hours of our code enforcement.
Well, no, they'll go on, when we do, we'll do weekends at times. Yeah, it's not that they won't. I mean, my code people, we will do signs sometimes on weekends, and...
And Tim, we also can check on licenses on short-term rentals, by state law, they're supposed to have a license?
The problem is, there aren't a lot of those. We've picked those up. That's the low-hanging fruit, having a license, but that doesn't mean you're necessarily doing vacation rentals at that point in time. So, you know, we follow on your advertising and all that. Usually, they are, and we've already got one gentleman, has three, that is on our list on that. We have a lot of others that are realtors, that are running these out of that. We've sent letters to some of them, saying it's illegal in the city to be doing that, and so, but we're having to pick up on it. So, this thing is tough. I was in the Keys, I don't know, and the gentleman talking about Big Pine Key, we had stringent regulations down. We took people to jail. We did chila, sting operations, and all sorts of stuff, and even that was strong. It's a tough, tough issue to deal with, because what happens is, you shut down, you get them on one website, they're moving around, and they find ways to get around it. So we have to rely on not only going through the internet and different other sources, but we have to rely on neighbors who are willing to give us a call, saying, look, we know this is going on, to point it out. And we do urge them to do that. That helps us pinpoint. Couple of the examples, in Eagle Drive, they're being cited already, and on that new house, we've got those, I don't show them up in our log, but we're doing that today. So they've been picked up, so...
Keep in mind that the process we have right now, code enforcement is a civil process. It's not a crime, it's a civil violation. If you wanted to make it a crime, you could certainly do that, but then you're going to depend on the courts to enforce your ordinances, and that's not their top priority.
Okay. Before I let you go, I guess we've got a consensus that a task force is okay to put together to get this moving?
Yes, sir, fine.
Tim, if you would, if you would, when you come to these task forces, could you give us a list of, like, the websites that you're going to, and what the actions are that you're, you've been taking on this?
Okay, I could do that. I really don't like to divulge many of the websites, because, as I said, these people, it's like whack-a-mole. So, you know, so I don't like to give away, but we certainly can go over, you know, some of the ones that are very well-known, like Airbnb, and it's the Vero, you know...
It's very beneficial for the public sees that things are moving along. Also, do we send a letter to those website operators?
Well, that's not a bad idea. I haven't done that, but I think we will take that advice and go forward and do that, and whether it'll, it'll do anything, at least as a try. We did get a, an email from a gentleman who said that Airbnb be willing to stop this if we send a citation. So we sent him the information. So whether they will do that for the entire city limits, I don't know, but it's worth a shot.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, you know...
Before I let you go, is there any movement on the, the home that Mr. Whittle had been talking about?
I talked to that gentleman again, and he is supposed to take care of his rear yard. There isn't any requirements in how good things look. I mean, let's face it, you got a bad neighbor, you got a bad neighbor. You can't, you can't address that. You could put more codes in place, but remember, then you affect everybody when you do this. I don't have a problem with the council wanting to do that, I'd just say that if we're really going to more stringent property codes, we really need to look at that international property maintenance thing. So, again, it's, it's one of those things. So, I've explained to the gentleman that he's making life miserable for everybody, it would be nice if he treated his neighbors with some dignity and take care of it. He did explain to me that the wall that we approved, he, I got a call from the building department, does that man know he needs a building permit? I said, we'll make sure he knows he needs a building permit. Well, it looks like, he argued with me that he was told by an inspector he didn't need a building permit, so we followed up on that, to make sure he needs a permit on the thing. I mean, so, it's like pulling teeth, but we're trying to get there, and I understand the problems, that, you know, we're doing what we can.
Anybody have any other questions?
Chief Curry's here.
Yeah, if I can get through, yeah, real quickly, if you...
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. McGary.
Hi, I'm Ann Belinkoff, and I'm at 619 Dahlia Lane, directly across the street from Matt's house. Everything I've heard here today, in terms of individual recommendations, I hope you will get the transcript and highlight line by line, because there has been at least one good enforceable thing in each thing someone has said. And as far as, so, there's a lot of talk on the street, and I think we've heard that there's already some kind of 30-day rule in place, that you can't have these short-term things, that the shortest term is 30 days. I think that I was unaware of that. I don't know when it happened. I think if you do have changes that are made, there should be a postcard or a letter that goes out to every property owner. I think holding all property owners responsible instead of websites and whatnot would be your best way to keep everything going the way many of us property owners want it to Second thing is, so, it wasn't until a few days after the police report was filed that I saw it, so thank you to the city for letting me just go down and get a copy of it. And when I saw the Airbnb, I went on the Airbnb, because that was the first I had heard of it. And it said 47 properties in Vero were rentable, or something along those lines. So when the gentleman before me just said, you know, oh, we've looked into eight of them, I'm thinking, well, if he said he's following up on everything that's advertised, I don't, you know, 47 and eight, I think 47 letters should have gone out, or whatever, and Craigslist and whatnot. I mean, I can see that that's a secretarial intensive thing, but you can at least get those letters out, or at least get the facts right, or something like that. And then when, again, he's, between Mr. Coman and this gentleman, said something about, you know, within a week later, we'll issued another citation or something, well, a car that had been renting Thursday and Wednesday was back there last night renting, and I think it's already been a week. So, you know, I'm sitting here going, like, I hear some things, and then I'm looking at the facts that are, you know, in front of me. So, maybe these are more neighbors, I don't know, or another issue. So, so really, that's, would be very helpful for all of us to know what's going on, please. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I would encourage you to attend the task force and give more information as to what needs to be done, and get it for them. David, real quick, trying to wrap this up.
Yes, I understand. I just wanted to add to Tim McGary's comments. We understand the resource demands that are made, and would certainly support additional assistance and help to McGary, but we'd also like to have a careful monitoring of the effectiveness of what he's doing, in order to be sure that those resources are being used properly. I mean, you could, for example, hire two part-time students from the university to search the websites, and let the code enforcement people, who are higher-paid full-time employees, go out and follow up in the investigations. It's not that they need to be doing the low-value work. And in terms of licenses, the low-hanging fruit, as Tim said, the fact, I question why the city does not require a license in addition to the state license, since the state requires a license.
Well, then you're saying it's legal.
No, I'm saying if they're going to try to get, to do the job...
Well, they do.
No, if...
It's called a business tax receipt, and...
No, 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 I'm saying...
Tim will not issue one.
Well, but they should apply for it, and then have it denied because of the basis of they are not in a properly zoned area. If they were in a properly zoned area, they can show their Florida license. That should be the steps.
Can we talk about that in the task force?
Yes, absolutely. So, anyway, and I liked Tim's comment about sting operations. Why is it that the Keys can do sting operations on these violators for vacation rentals, but we can't? Is there some reason Vero is less effective?
I don't think we can. It's not an issue whether we can't do it, it's whether we just haven't decided to do it yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Chief, if you would, if you could comment on the, on the crime aspect of this, and kind of wrap this issue up, please? I've been getting a lot of calls as to what's been going on, and how the police has been involved in this.
Yes, Vice Mayor, good morning. Councilmember Graves, and Councilmember Old as well. David Curry, Police Chief. The 18th was a Sunday, January 18th, and we had two, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, we had two noise complaints. It was very early in the morning at first, 4:30-ish that morning, loud noise. We made contact with individuals at that home on Dahlia. We obtained their information and vehicle information, which proved to be crucial, I'll share that in just a minute as well. And then we were back there again about 10 minutes till 2:00, 2:00 o'clock that afternoon, so twice on the 18th again, which was a Sunday, and dealt with those, some of those same individuals. And as you know, the 19th was MLK Day, and we responded to Dahlia when Mr., when the homeowner came back, once the individuals had left, saw his home was in disarray, a number of televisions were missing, and things like that. We also responded to two homes that day as well, one on Hibiscus and one on Bougainvillea. Again, already mentioned, reference car burglaries, where property was taken from two different vehicles. One vehicle had a bricklayer smashed a window, and some iPhones taken from it, and another vehicle was unlocked with a purse sitting on the front seat, and some credit cards, and things like that, gift cards, some cash. Some of that property was recovered at the 626 Dahlia home. So we tied that into there as well. We also obtained some video at the McDonald's, when she checked, when the one victim checked her credit card, showed that it had been used at McDonald's twice, and then the Sunoco right next to it here in the city limits, 1900 block. And we followed that up and did find a vehicle going through the drive-through that met the description of one of the three vehicles, again, that it was at Dahlia over the weekend. So we obtained a number of names, they're all out of date county, they're teenagers to young adults, early twenties, mid twenties, and we're doing follow-up work as we speak. The Airbnb was not cooperative initially, and we had to issue some subpoenas, and we're waiting for information from them as well. We, again, I do want to thank the residents, and we talk time and time again about, if you see something, call us, and we, we wouldn't have the information if the neighbors and the citizens on Dahlia and in that surrounding area did not call us on those couple occasions for noise, because that's how we obtain names, driver's license, addresses, vehicle registration, and owners of that nature. So, there was also a Kia stolen from Eagle Drive in and around that time, and recovered in Port St. Lucie. We're not too sure if that's connected, but that was around that same timeframe. And then, as they mentioned, there was a couple other names where they may have been victims as well. At that time, they hadn't reported. Someone mentioned something over Facebook, a couple others. We found information at the house, two, two other names that were mentioned earlier. I do want to commend the officers for doing a very thorough job, to literally going on the rooftop of the home and finding clothes, a duffel bag of clothes that were left behind, to going through the person's trash and finding vital information that was thrown away. Cell phone cases from the one victim, and, and the McDonald's wrappers from the McDonald's, and some, and credit cards from the other victim. So, again, commending the officers that did respond there for their thoroughness and attention to that case. So we're moving forward, and that's an update in that regard, for sure. And again, thank you to the residents for calling us.
Chief, is there anything that we can do about the websites? Do you have any ideas about that?
I think what I've been hearing is a good way to proceed, Mr. Old, for sure. They're, they're all around. I can tell you, I'm, I go to Hilton Head every summer, Hilton in South Carolina, and that whole area, and it's a different place, different communities want different things, and it's used throughout. I mean, anywhere you go, and as they mentioned, you can go on any of those websites and, and see so many places around the country in the world to rent. And, and, you know, there are good renters, we all know that, but unfortunately, you know, there are people like we had recently that ruins it, if you even wanted in your community. And again, I think what everyone's been talking about this morning is a good way to proceed. I would certainly offer my assistance and our assistance, and even take part on the task force if need be or wanted, and however we can make our community safe, that's my job.
Okay.
Chief, I greatly appreciate your efforts. I'm real impressed that the community's coming together and helped on this issue.
Yes, sir.
It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
We will be ending public comment unless there's anybody else in the room.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just one more comment. Mr. Hunter, you'll be getting us the names of people that you would like to send invitation to on this, okay? If you send it through my office, we'll make sure it gets out.
Mr. Gaffanti, I believe you're first.
Good morning, I'm Joseph Gaffanti, and I live at 441 Holly Road. The, this is about FMPA. On Sunday, the 25th of January in the year 15, was a front-page article about the FMPA spending. The author made a comment about the inexplicable, 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 it's a hard one for me to say, inexplicable perks that these people receive. So I ran to my dictionary and looked up the word inexplicable, and I found out it is exactly what I thought it meant, unexplainable, or not being capable of understood. If the author, and I'm not going to mention his name, had a, I'm not going to say better, but different education, he would have been able to deduce why these perks are so outrageous. If Brian Hetty were here, he could tell you, if he chose to, that the reason why is these guys are cheats and thieves that are running the FMPA. He might say that. And I've already said publicly that I use the word gangsters. That's who's running the FMPA and the OUC. They're factors. That's what they are. And they're in the process of laundering money, which I've said for years, that's what the FMPA and the OUC are all about. They're not in the business of providing power. That's just a front. That was in the local paper, the Press Journal. Then, coincidentally, this paper, I'm sure you're familiar with, I'm being as quick, go as quickly as I can. I don't have time to prepare this, this stuff. I got other things going on in my life, but this is important to me, also. Vero Beach 32963 had an article in January 29th issue, and about the state audit FMPA staff exceedingly well-paid. And it substantiates what was printed in the local Press Journal, the daily paper. And I like to point out a couple of things, if I can read this. They talked about risky investments and immense debt, risky investments in spending. And that's part of the program. They're not risky investments. When we found out about the contract that FMPA engaged in speculating on the price of gas, I explained to the council at that time that this is part of the money laundering operation, because for every contract, there's somebody on the other side. So we were the purchaser. They were, they purchased gas at a very high rate, and when Gabbert was the city manager, and he thought, "Oh, this is great." Well, it turned out that not too long afterwards, we were paying for gas three times the natural gas, three times the price, because it dropped from over $10. I don't know what, we got locked in at 9:00 or something, and it went down. And this is a good way to launder money. That's the way to do it, because the other guys on the other side of this contract, they had the windfall.
Yeah.
That's what happened. We didn't lose, we lost money, but somebody else made it, and that's what this is all about. That's what this whole scheme, this whole FMPA, and how it ever got started is beyond me, why anybody would get involved in that. And then there's another, I'm trying to go as fast as, I'm sorry. And then, Old, your council member, Old, says that he doesn't understand. Well, I appreciate that. I always like somebody to recognize their ignorance, and I've had to do that a couple times in my life, a long time ago, but, so I just wanted to, that's one important thing. And I don't know how he proposes to get educated, but I sure wouldn't rely on anybody from the FMPA to help him out, or the FMEA, as this article. I'm sure you guys have read this, or guys and gals have read this, or you ought to have read it, and not that, you know, it's that important to read. And then, the mayor of Indian River Shores, um, on, okay, I can't, I can't get this, but I'll forget that one, but, or skip that one, but, the bottom line is that the best thing that's happened to the city of Vero Beach is the lawsuit, and the hostility, or the, I wouldn't classify it as hostility, is the pressure from the county and Indian River Shores. Because ultimately, hopefully, which is what I've been pleading for, for years, is that you get these guys and depose them under oath, and then you'll find out what's going on. Interestingly enough, the last thing I just realized, the 3296, 32963 paper says that, tells about their $137,000 average salary. What they didn't do is tell what the head guy, the CEO, what his salary is. It'd be interesting to know. And the same thing with the OUC. You, I, you got the point.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? If not, we'll move into the consent agenda. Is there any items that the council would like to pull? Okay. I take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we move off of that, I do want to send my sincere thanks to the boards and commissions. It's an awful lot of work. To come and sit up here and do the public work is often a very, a tough thing to do. And to take time out of your schedule to do that is a very worthy thing. I greatly appreciate our board and commission members of doing that. We'll go on to our public hearing. Our first one is the tobacco products. And Wayne, would you like to read the title? Tammy, would you read the title?
Yes, sir. An ordinance of the city of Vero Beach, Florida amending Chapter 73 Tobacco Products of the Code of the City of Vero Beach related to the use of electronic cigarettes, providing for conflict and separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Wayne?
This was updated from your first reading. Basically, creates a prohibition of use of e-cigarettes in the same places that tobacco cigarettes are, smoking is not permitted. And it does get, we did add the exception for e-cigarette stores, which, you're adopting the same exceptions as in the Florida Indoor Clean Air Act, which is, there's a list of exceptions where smoking is allowed. So you've adopted the same things there, but then we're also adding the e-cigarette stores, where it would still be permitted.
Are you saying this is our second reading?
Yes, this is public hearing. Final hearing.
Okay, final hearing. Is there any public comment on this? If you would.
Good morning. Leslie Spurlock. Today, I'm wearing my hat as being the chair of the School Health Advisory Committee for the school district in Indian River County. One of our members did write an email and sent it out to all the council members, and I'd like for the public record to read that for her today. Dear council members, I urge you to vote in favor of the ordinance which will prohibit the use of e-cigarettes in any place within the city wherein the Florida Clean Indoor Act prohibits smoking. Children and youth are especially vulnerable to the confusion and appearance of normalcy the consumption of these devices caused in public places where cigarettes are prohibited. There needs to be no confusion that these products are a tobacco product and should be treated as such. Thank you, Judy Orcutt. And Judy is the secretary of our School Health Advisory Committee. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leslie.
Good morning. I'm speaking in behalf of Treasure Coast Community Health. I'm Dr. Daniel Thornton. I'm a pediatrician with them. I wanted to commend you on this ordinance. I think it's fantastic. I think it's an excellent piece of legislation. I think for all the wherés as you listed, they certainly make a lot of sense. Also, as a pediatrician, I'm concerned about the impression we give small children. We're all role models for small children, and I think an infant or a small child can't distinguish the difference between a tobacco cigarette or an electric cigarette, and they all are bad impressions. They all facilitate nicotine addiction, and the FDA's got nice ways of addressing this that don't stand in the face of everybody, including things like patches and gum. So, I wanted to commend you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment? If not, I'd entertain a motion from council.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, Tammy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes. Motion passes. We've got a resolution. This one was recommended, I believe, by the mayor for FMPA Florida Audit, Auditor General Operation Audit. We don't have a title for this, but Tammy--
There is a title. It's on the second sheet.
Oh, second sheet.
Yeah, I'll read it. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida Urging Other Member Cities and the Board of Directors of the Florida Municipal Power Agency to Support and Adopt Certain Actions in Response to the Recent Florida Auditor General Operational Audit of the Agency, Providing for an Effective Date."
Okay. Just says, is there anybody in the public that likes to speak on this? If not, council?
I just wanted to make it aware for the record that we did receive a letter from the town of Indian River Shores. I'm sure you all--
Yeah, we got it.
--received it, so.
Also, just for clarification, since we are in litigation, it's very important to remember that these, this resolution was passed by both of our attorneys, and that they understand that we were passing it today, or in the process of passing it today.
And they see no issue--
No, ma'am, they do not.
--with what we're requesting?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, they had been put into how to draft this resolution.
Are you endorsing this, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, sir, I am endorsing this.
Okay, thank you. Motion, or?
Yeah, I just think this is very important to react to this audit and to suggest to the board members of FMPA to take action, and this is the action that's recommended. I just think this is very important to do.
Would you like to make that into a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make--
I'll second.
Okay. If there's any, no other discussion, Tammy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes. Okay, with that, Tammy, do you have any matters?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, this is a, as you know, we've been looking at two different areas in which to address our electric rates, which we agree we would like to have lower. One of that is the rate study, which is in the process right now, looking at our rate structure as well as our rates. The second part of this was the optimization study, in which we would try to optimize what we have, see what areas we can cut, sort of designed after what we did in the water and sewer, which we were able to save substantial amount of money, for example, in our lab operation in the water department. So we are recommending that we agree with, and execute this contract that is in front of you today. It is the contract not to exceed $175,000, and it is with the Power Services Incorporated. We did have a committee that looked over the responses to our RFP, and that this is the firm that was recommended as number one. We presented to you last, I think it was the last council meeting, and now we have gone back, designed the contract. It covers an awful lot of areas. I have gotten comments that said, "Oh, we don't really need to study this or study that," but I think we were trying to make it as inclusive as possible so we hit in all target areas that we are doing. It's, it is something, I think, that is going to be inclusive. We will be managing this contract through the electric department, both TND and the power resources, the generation facilities, and feel very good about this contract in the way it was proposed.
Have they given us a timeline that they think they can stick to?
Yes, ma'am.
I was searching through--
There is a timeline in here for the different functions.
Yeah, I think each one of the functions is a certain number of days to complete it. 60, 90, 120, that sort of thing, yeah.
And I can't find that page, but it is part of the contract.
And I would assume those days would start when it's approved.
Yes, sir. Once you approve it, then we will execute the contract.
Yeah. Okay. I'm seeing this as an actionable item. Is there any member of the public that'd like to talk on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any conversation? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes three to nothing. Mr. Coman?
Well, I just got a message from my office that the PSC has agreed with the staff recommendation on the county's petition and the city's petition, which they had the hearing on this morning. In other words, they supported the staff in saying that the county's petition should be denied, and the city's petition should be granted. So they basically found that, yes, they have superior jurisdiction over territory.
So the territory, the service area trumps the franchise area?
Yes.
Wow.
Right.
Yeah. Go on to city council matters. Anybody have any old or new business?
I think we need to reschedule our planning or sitting down kind of time.
Ms. Fox sent an email, correct?
Yes, I think we're looking at March 24th. I put a little notice in your box to check your calendars.
Okay, I'll get back to you on that.
March 24th.
I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, if there is no other business, we'll go into the matters. Just, you know, the last couple weeks have been kind of busy. We attended the Compassion Vero movie, Kindness is Contagious. We were very lucky to have the producer of that movie show up and give us a great talk, and show us how important kindness is, and to dispel the myth that nice guys finish last, and in fact, it shows that nice guys finish first. People like to deal with people that are nice. Also, attended the Art by the Sea. Glad to see that the Vero Beach Art Club put on another great event, and it was a, really nice to attend and see all of our friends again. The Vero Beach Performing Arts Center celebrated their 10th anniversary. It was really great to see the kids out there. The performance was absolutely spectacular. We also, we had Downtown Friday, last Friday. It looks like season's back, and we had a huge crowd. And also, got a chance to flip pancakes, and Tammy was gracious enough to be right there and guide us along the whole way.
Good. Okay, I got to flip pancakes as well. I, my crowd wasn't as busy as your crowd was, so. I also wanted to congratulate the Garden Club on the Garden Fest. I went to that, and one person made a comment, "You would think they're giving away money. There's so many people there." So they just, fantastic, amazing plants, amazing demonstrations and education, and I just want to thank the Garden Club for all that they do in Indian River County and the city of Vero Beach. They re-landscape the library. They are, they are fantastic, so thank you.
I think the spirit and the traffic and the number of events that are going on are really good, there's no question. It's really, really alive now, it's great.
Wonderful. Yeah.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may make a comment, number one, on the pancake flipping. If it hadn't have been for the chief and I, they would not have been at Warm Grittl's when you got there. So we really set the base so the pancakes could actually be cooked, and you can ask Tammy, that was a challenge, but we--
We'll make sure that he's the first one there every year.
When you're dealing with 100-year-old gas burners that probably only get looked at once a year, they're a little, but anyway, I think it was very successful. We had a pretty good crowd as well.
It was.
I did notice there were some hot spots, cold spots.
Yes. Also, just, Amelia, just for your information, work order number one sets out the times and the scope of each one of those timeframes of the work that would be expected under the contract.
If there's nothing else, motion to adjourn?
Yep, certainly.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.